Charter Request for Applications on for November sixteenth, two thousand and twenty-three. The time is now three thirty-two P. M. May I have a roll call, please?
Mr. Parker?
Present.
Mr. Zeragon?
Present.
Mr. Ashley?
Dr. Batiste?
Present.
Ms. Bowdoin?
Ms. Eames?
Present.
Mr. Marshall? Also present, Dr. Avis Williams Superintendent, Ms. Ashley Halpern, Board Counsel. You have a quorum.
Thank you, Ms. Brown. I'm looking around. Are our interpretation services in the room for today? If we could have somebody go and flag our interpreters down, we'll make we'll make sure that we have those services provided if they are needed. Thank you so much. Now going to move to our item one point two, our Pledge of Allegiance. I ask everybody to please rise and join us in stating the pledge. All right, I'm now moving to item one point three, Rules for Public Comment. I will defer to our Board Counsel.
Thank you, President Parker. Anyone wishing to speak with regard to items on the agenda should fill out a public comment card and submit it to the Board Secretary. Cards will be received up to one half hour after the meeting begins. Each person shall be permitted to speak up to two minutes as established by the Chair. I will recognize the speaker and give the speaker permission to proceed. The speaker shall state their name and address for the board records. Those who have a group concern are encouraged to select a spokesperson from the group to address the concern. Speakers are expected to be as concise as possible and to present their questions and comments in an objective manner and in accordance with good taste and decorum without reference to or insinuations against the board, its members, or school system employees. Disruptions or disorderly conduct at the public hearing will constitute grounds for the presiding officer to ask security personnel to remove the offender.
Thank you so much. Now moving to item one point four, Adoption of the Agenda. Do we have any additions, deletions, or modifications?
No.
Hearing none. Do we have a motion to approve the agenda as provided?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. It's been moved by Vice President Zeragon and seconded by Board Member Batiste. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The agenda is adopted. Now moving to item two point one, I will defer to Mr. Raphael Simmons, our Chief Portfolio Innovation and Accountability Officer, to review our hearing guidelines and introduce our guests.
Okay. Thank you, President Parker, members of the board, Dr. Williams, and everyone else in attendance. We are here today for a public hearing for charter applicants. And the purpose of the regarding the purpose of a public hearing for applicants, state statute requires a public meeting for two reasons. One, to consider the proposals, and two, to receive public input. This year's RFA process resulted in the district receiving two applicants, Engage Learning Academies of Louisiana as a new start, and Renew Reinventing Education as a transformation. Renew's application is for two K eight schools. This year's RFA process also yielded engagement with additional organizations as well. However, the listed organizations fell into the categories of either late, not submitted, or withdrawn. Of note is that this year we had the potential to have four applicants as opposed to not having any at all, which was the case last year. I know this timeline looks very familiar to the board, but I do like to take the opportunity to highlight exactly where we are in the RFA process. The actions in yellow denote when applicants are required to engage or participate in RFA process activities. This slide provides more detail regarding key dates regarding final decisions. The superintendent will present her applicant recommendations to the board on December fourteenth of two thousand and twenty-three. December nineteenth is the deadline for board action to reject any of the superintendent's recommendations. And February twenty-third of two thousand and twenty-four is the deadline for applicants to appeal local district decisions to the Louisiana Board of Elementary and Secondary Education. Just to go, I just want to go over the procedures for for the RFA public hearing. Each charter applicant will have ten minutes to speak to the Orleans Parish School Board and the public. Charter applicants had an opportunity to submit a PowerPoint presentation, if so desired. And after each charter applicant's presentation, public comments may commence, and board members may ask charter applicants questions upon completion of any public comments. And here you see the the order of presentations. First, we will hear from the team from Engage Learning Academies of Louisiana.
Thank you so much. And just for the record, we are now moving on to item three point one.
Hi, good evening. Thank you for the opportunity. And I would like to say good afternoon, well, good evening to all of our supporters and community community partners that are here with us today. Okay, so Engage Learning Academies of Louisiana is definitely a different and unique way of addressing some needs that have been identified, not just in New Orleans, Louisiana, but across our country right now. The mission is to empower underserved and at-risk students and their educators who invest in their life story. Every student is capable of greatness and deserves an equitable quality education despite their emotional and socioeconomic circumstance. The vision of the school is to educate students to become visionary leaders who are poised to lead society into the twenty-first century, to live lives unselfish and to li- and to have a positive impact on their communities, and upon successful completion of the program, transitioning back to a traditional school setting. To summarize where we are with this, we have identified population of students overaged, a year or two behind academically, who are on track to drop out from high school. And primarily target this population with a very specific curriculum that right now lives in this state in eight, in eight schools and in six parishes. Currently, Star Academy is the name of the curriculum. And Jefferson Parish, our nearest neighbor, have two academies that are currently running in in their parish. I would also add that the superintendent is probably familiar with Star Academy because I think her previous district had an academy, and so she too is familiar with the curriculum and some of the successes and outcomes because of the 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 unique setup of this education model. So Star Academy is an accelerated project-based program designed to reengage overage students who missed opportunities to experience academic success. Current sixth grade students are eligible, must commit to at least one academic year. The Star Academy model allows students to complete seventh and eighth grade in a one-school calendar year. Successful candidates, of course, will have to take the LEAP test with success in the spring, and upon successful completion of the program are able to then move on with their counterparts age-appropriate in the in the high school setting. Star Academy embraces and utilizes project-based learning in five distinct labs as its model to accelerate learning and coursework while simultaneously captivating students through interest, engagement, and repetitive success. The five labs include English Language Arts, Mathematics, Science, Social Studies, and a career in technical, technical education. The why. Why Star Academy is the chosen curriculum of Engage Learning Academies of Louisiana. STEM-like, hands-on approach, student-centered classrooms. Reverse disengagement of minority and low-income students who are at high, extreme risks of becoming dropouts. Empowering students, changing the academic trajectory of those students, altering their lives in a positive way, and improving the quality of their lives. With over twenty years of proven success, Star Academies have re-engaged these at-risk students, providing an academic path to success for them, reclaiming their self-esteem and self-worth, making them independent explorers, putting them in right-grade placement through achieved, through accelerated achievement, exposure to career and technical options, and the accelerated matriculation back into the high school setting. What you see on this slide, the small diagram to the right, is the model that is set up. Now, it doesn't have to, the layout doesn't have to be that way, but of course, it is five individual rooms. Each room has a class of twenty. It's a twenty-to-one ratio. Once the curriculum is entered, everything comes with it. It's new furniture. All of the furniture is provided through Star Academy. All of the modules come in. It's a turnkey program. Teachers don't have to do anything but go through training, which is ongoing, and walk into the rooms. The rooms are ready and operable to start Module One. They only have to decorate bulletin boards in their choice. The Star Academy team comes in, and they take care of everything else for them. The next slide talks about the project-based learning model. With students coming in, every module starts off with them identifying a problem with given strengths, constraints, and challenges, generating multiple ideas to solve those problems strictly through teacher facilitation and exploration independently. They utilize prototyping and potential solutions throughout this problem-solving process. Allows for testing to develop, to develop solutions in a live or in an authentic setting, including A.I. And it's already built into the program. And each student has the opportunity to construct and develop that their prototype without passing the scapula for the next student to cut and the next student to pull the organ out. Everybody has their own individual prototype to build while they work in that community setting. Devices a solution and a path to help solve the problem. They design and develop from that prototype what the end product will be, and the refine, they refine the solution based on feedback from experts, instructors, and their peers. The experts and instructors are not necessarily centralized to that site. Star Academies have now set the the curriculum and the design out so that they they can then reach out to students who are in South Carolina to see what path they took and how they came about coming up with the right answer. Once all of the data is collected per module, the each single site will see where their students are, how their students are performing, but they will also see how students across the United States are performing and how they're getting to problem solutions. And there are opportunities for several big nationwide training sessions for these teachers, these educators, to come together and be able to share those things and those successes or those difficulties and help come up with solutions to move students through the different modules. Projects begin with students asking questions about the problem, the nature of the problem that that needs solving, what assumptions can be made and why those problems exist, and how, in the end, the usable benefit from the solution in a real-world problem. We just did a ribbon-cutting in Camden, New Jersey. The schools started at the beginning of August. The student testimonies were the most impactful testimonies that I've heard. They were the ambassadors for the success that they were having. One of the students said, of course, I'm here because I was two years behind, because I was missing school. This gave me an opportunity to get back on track, and then I figured out I was so far behind because of those days that I'd missed. So then the teacher was able to go into the Star Academy database and pull specific skill-based lessons to help that student in that area of need to catch that student up to where the student needed to be to end up having success with the skills that were lacking, not due to inability, just due to not being in school, to get those things. After he finished speaking, I had the opportunity to be escorted with, by him on the tour. And he said, in the first module, I really struggled with understanding some things in medieval, in medieval times and the war. But when we got to the second module and we talked about warfare in current situations from the two wars that the country, that that the world is experiencing, I sort of understood some things better. War is about power, land, and girls sometimes. And I simply asked the question, well, what's different about war now than war back then? And he said, I don't think there's much difference. I said, well, there's some differences. Let's talk about those differences. And through that conversation, the motives may have been the same, but the means in which war is carried out was different. And then we talked about those different things. And so what I was able to convey to him is, the way the modules are set up, the standards never disappear. It's not a linear, it's not a linear design curriculum. If you don't get it in the first module, you're going to see it again in the second module. It may not look the exact same, but it is the same standards. And if you don't get it in the second module, you'll get it in three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, or ten. It won't go away, and you will be able to track your student's success during the progress and progress monitoring and the testing at each, at the end of each module. Of course, this type of learning generates ideas. Students are given opportunities. They bring their ideas to the table. I'm sorry, is that me?
That is you. Unfortunately, I think the the timing is for around ten minutes. So if you could just summarize in the next thirty to sixty seconds, that'd be great.
So the most of it was talking about the curriculum. Most important, I would say, is the very last slide. Right now, in New Orleans public schools, by age, this this is your current data that 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 you have published. You have one hundred and seventy-five overage sixth graders, one hundred and seventy-six seventh graders, three hundred and eight eighth graders, four hundred and ninety-six ninth graders, for the total of eleven hundred and forty-eight students. Statistically, we are going to lose more than ninety percent of them to dropout. There has to be something done, and we have to come together as a community, as educators and leaders to figure that out. And I believe that this is at least one of the answers. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Board members, at this point, if you have any questions for, Mr. Simmons, that's right. This is when board members ask questions of the applicants. Yeah, there are no public comments on the item. Board members, any questions for this applicant? Vice President Zeragon?
No, go ahead.
Yeah, the curriculum sounds very interesting, very engaging. It kind of reminds me of like Montessori before high school with the project-based individual student stuff. That sounds very promising, but I guess my one thought is, to the extent that y'all are aware of our current demographic situation in the district, declining enrollment, opportunities for new schools being limited, just that you are aware of what's going on right now in our system?
Yes, sir.
Okay, just wanted to be sure that y'all understand how that is as far as even if approved, getting to school and all that.
Absolutely. Yes, sir.
Yeah, thank you.
Dr. Batiste?
Thank you, Mr. President, and thank you for the wonderful presentation that you've shared with us this evening. I was listening attentively for a budget. I didn't hear you reference the cost of the program and what are you going to, or how is your budget going to be asked for in terms of the number of students from those whom you said would constitute the population that would be served?
So in the first year, the proposal is to start with one grade level, so we're only talking eighty students.
Okay.
And the initial startup cost is a million dollars. That has already been guaranteed. And so MFP special funds would only be to pay for staff in the in the daily run, you know, transportation, those things. And so all startup costs have been pledged.
Okay, and have, do you have a facility in mind?
So we have identified several facilities, but of course, are not moving forward with, there just isn't a need right now.
Are you able to say in which locales they are?
So, of course, there are few Catholic facilities that are available. There's Dryad's YMCA that's available. And there, I do know that there are a few NOLA PS schools that that are possibly available. We didn't, we haven't spoken to anyone, but we have identified properties that that have potential to house the program.
And did you say that there are six such? And did you say that there are six such sites in the state of Louisiana?
There are eight.
Eight, okay, and one of them in our neighbor?
Two are in...
Jefferson?
Jefferson, one is in St. Helena, Tangier-Pahoe. Governor John Bell Edwards purchased 6 million of them for the state. Jefferson Parish purchased their two out of their escrow funds.
Is there any outcome data that you would be able to share with us or get to us for our consideration in terms of the success of those programs that are throughout the state?
The ones in the state, of course, they're just startups, but we have 20 years of data from schools with like demographic, districts with like demographics, and we are collecting data from those schools. They finished their first year, so we do have some data, and absolutely, we can share that.
And if you would get that to Mr. Simmons and Mr. Simmons could share with us, that would be extremely helpful.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Thank you so much. Just, just a couple of quick questions. Like Dr. Batiste, I was, I had a question first about finance. Who is supporting you through your application with regards to the financial projections and ensuring that you have the appropriate expertise should the school, you know, receive an approved charter?
So, two of the three board members that we are currently, that have currently committed, one is a tax attorney and the other one is a financial planner.
Excellent, thank you. I guess another question I had is, are you applying as an alternative school or as a traditional school to serve students that are overaged? Because I know that there are different accountability frameworks from the state for the, for those purposes.
We are not applying as an alternative school.
Okay. Let me see here. You said you're starting with 80 students, you're projected to start 80 students in sixth grade?
Yes.
Is that right? And then are you growing by 80 students every year or what's your growth pattern?
Yes, sir. It's 80 students every year and ninth grade is on there because there's a continuum of support. So, once the students are placed in ninth grade, we're not offering ninth grade, but we are going into the buildings that they have been matriculated back into to continue to offer support to those students for that first year.
So, so then at max, the, for the MFP, you would have 240 students and then for the additional 80 students in ninth grade, it would be some sort of contractual arrangement with the charter school to receive, where you would provide additional support?
The, the additional support would not be at cost to the other school, it will be built into our model.
Got it. 200, I will say, 240 is a very difficult number to run a school on, so I'd be interested to see those financial projections. I also remember from my time at the Louisiana Department of Education, there were often times where charter applicants would have an enrollment table and then in their initial years, they would be significantly under enrollment projections. So, what is the plan if instead of 240 students you have, or instead of 80 students in your first year, you have 30 or 40?
So, the, 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 the financial backers, I'm very confident that any gap that's there will be, the, the organization will be, will be okay.
I think, I think Mr. Simmons and his team will need some more information on that.
Yes, we could definitely, we could definitely provide those things. But what I will say is that there's not been a startup that there wasn't a waiting list for, because it's such a need and students are motivated to be placed in their correct grades that historically, that has not been a problem.
Let me see what other questions I have here. You mentioned the 90% dropout rate for those sixth, seventh, and eighth grade students. I'm interested, is that based on NOLA PS data? What is the source for that?
So, we, that came from, so we have a, Star Academy has a national database where we pull numbers from. And initially, I was going to pepper the slideshow with statistics and thought that that would not be very informative. But we have numbers, how much money is lost, what happens to students when they drop out, incarceration, re-entry, workforce development, how much money the district retains if the students stay. And so, we do have all of those numbers.
I think I would be interested, if you could provide this information to Mr. Simmons, to where that 90% figure came from, because it is, you know, I'm not, I'm a former alternative school teacher, I'm not doubting the, the importance of making sure that students are in their correct grade, but I also would just want to make sure that we're operating with accurate information, so that would be helpful. And you also mentioned the $1 million guarantee. Is that a, is that federal funding? Is that private funding?
Private funding.
Private funding, okay. I'm sure Mr. Simmons and his team will be reaching out with additional questions about that. Okay, I think that concludes my questions. Board members, any others?
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
And thank you, and I would like to thank Ms. Denise Carpenter for being here with me on her birthday.
Happy birthday!
Yes, thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Mann. Next up, we'll hear from, from Ms. Tanya Bryant from Renew Schools, so.
Good afternoon, President Parker, Orleans Parish School Board, Dr. Williams, and the community, of course. My name is Tanya Bryant and I am the CEO of Renew Schools. And presenting with me today is Lisa Giratano, our Chief Academic Officer, and Dr. Mary Cole Bush, our Chief of Student Support. In the audience today, we are also pleased to have two of our board members, Kathleen Park and Jamal Brown, to support us as always. Today, we are pleased to present to you our request for two Type I transformation charters. And throughout this presentation, we'll describe the work of Renew Schools, how we've progressed in the strategies we've employed and would employ if granted to additional charters. All right, there we go. A little history on Renew. In 2010, while many charters were opening one grade level at a time, our founders worked with the Recovery School District to take over the two lowest-performing schools in the district and also the state, with the intention of taking on the whole school with all of its current students, grades K through eight, with, with the intention of transforming that school or those two schools into rigorous preparatory college schools and successful schools, of course. That is the mission that Renew has been operating with since 2010, and that's the same mission we come with you, to you with today. Renew has unique values that underscore the positive effect that the network has on transforming a school. We achieve together, we collaborate with one another, we reflect on our strengths and our areas of growth, we celebrate one another, that's my favorite, while we constantly innovate for the future. In Renew's distinct turnaround model, we recognize that each school possesses its own unique set of needs, characteristics, strengths, and challenges. Every school needs support, and the strategies listed here have led to tremendous growth and success, and we intend to replicate these strategies if granted additional schools. We also have a robust support team for our students and our teachers. The academic team and the student support teams are the heart and the soul of the network, and the other teams play a supporting role as well. If you spend time at Renew Laurel, you may see the Early Literacy Director of Curriculum and Instruction, DCI, reviewing data with the Assistant Principal to determine which teachers and students are on track. And then you may see the next step as working with the Director of Intervention for the network and/or the Intervention Coordinator at the school to determine what appropriate interventions are necessary. If you spend time at Renew Schaumburg, you may see the English Language Learner, DCI, working with a fourth-grade teacher in a general education setting to implement strategies that will benefit English language learners as well as other students in the class. Or if you revisit, or if you visit Renew DTA, you may see the Director of Compliance serving popcorn or candy at Fall Fest or even manning the dunk tank. The network team supports in every way possible, it's expected, required, and very much appreciated. I didn't say much about the Finance Team, Data Team, et cetera, but those teams are equally important and are designed to work through a lot of the routine reporting, state and federal requirements, so that our principals and our school leaders can focus on teaching and learning. I do want to stress that the support goes both ways, from the network to the school, but also from the school to the network. Collaboration and feedback are valued and essential in everything that we do. This graph shows SPS growth over time, and I want to draw your attention to the black line. Five years ago, the three schools we currently operate started with a 51.2 SPS and have risen. This graph says 70.9, I believe, but it's really 71.6 after scores were released. And we really look at this data as the average of all of our schools. If you look at the slope of our individual schools, the colored lines, you can see that they move in tandem with that average growth and they grow together. I really believe that's a testament and a perfect representation of the collaboration between the schools and the network. Now, drawing your eyes to the bottom of the screen, that's our Progress Index average over the last three years, and we can just see that we're moving kids in the right direction. And it's part of our core beliefs that all kids and all children can and will learn, and the Individual Progress Index for each school is at the top. Now, going back to those strategies that led to that growth that you just saw in our current schools, Lisa and Mary will share more about each one. We hope to replicate these strategies at additional schools if granted the opportunity.
The first strategy that's led to our success is our high-quality curriculum and instruction and paired with assessments. We use Tier One curriculum across all available grades and content areas. And while we know that Tier One curriculum is best for students, it's rigorous and challenging for teachers to execute, so we provide multiple levels of support to teachers to ensure that they're able to execute that curriculum at a high level. This, oh, oh, sorry, don't touch, sorry. That includes internalization support at both the unit and lesson level, ensuring that there are aligned assessments at the daily level, such as exit tickets at the end of a unit, or larger assessments, which we do at the mid-quarter and end of each quarter. We also use universal screening throughout the school year. We also provide content team development that may look like school-level math coaches leading sessions with math teachers, doing data analysis on an assessment that they gave. It might also be the Science DCI pushing into after-school PD to lead a session on engagement strategies aligned to the science curriculum. We also know that the population of students we serve requires differentiation and scaffolding, so we provide a lot of support to both our teachers and our coaches on how to ensure that we're meeting the needs of all students in our classrooms. That may look like small group instruction, scaffolding a lesson, changing up questions, or adjusting instruction as needed. Our second key area of success has been our data-driven instruction. As you can see from our data, we really believe in using data on a daily basis to drive what's happening in our classrooms. At the forefront of that are our students. Our students truly own their data in our buildings. They consistently set goals, meet those goals, reflect when they haven't met them, and adjust accordingly. You can see in this picture, a student has found his name on the mastery wall at Schaumburg and is celebrating finding himself at the mastery level for the first time on an interim assessment. We have teachers and coaches use data at every level, so that could look like a check for understanding, it could look like aggressive monitoring during a lesson, it could look like unit assessments, or we use LEAP 360 as our interim assessment throughout the school year. Finally, as aligned to one of our values, we celebrate our growth, both big and small. That could be through a data talk at the beginning of class to celebrate a class's mastery on an exit ticket, or it could be an end-of-quarter celebration for all the students who scored mastery or above on the interim assessment. Our third key area is instructional coaching. At Renew, we pride ourselves in the coaching and development that we provide to our teachers. We believe and we ensure that 100% of teachers are coached 100% of the time. That is through content experts in every building. We have both literacy and math coaches on each of our campuses. We also have a robust team of Directors of Curriculum and Instruction who provide coaching to teachers as well as to those math and literacy coaches within the building. We have a consistent coaching cycle where every teacher has a coach, they reflect and set goals for the year, they have action plans, they go through at least weekly observations and debriefs, and have data points throughout the year for progress monitoring. Mary is going to share more about our intervention model.
Intervention is another way that we got to the tremendous growth that we have. Renew has made significant investments in intervention programming and staffing with a focus on literacy and math. Using multi-tier systems of support, we monitor our student progress with interventions on a consistent and regular basis. This data is used to make important decisions about students. It's used to group students to maximize intervention implementation and to measure progress with intervention, as well as make decisions about the appropriateness and effectiveness of intervention. At one of our schools, we, we, I'm sorry, at one of our schools, they talk about interventions and progress constantly and consistently. You saw a picture of a student looking at their data. They focus on getting 1% of growth every day. If you put that in perspective, if a student focuses on 1% of growth daily, by the end of the school year, they will have achieved tremendous growth. We support our diverse learners. Our diverse learners, it, it consists of our gifted and talented students as well as our students with disabilities. Those students with disabilities may require an IEP, they may require a Section 504 IAP. Our diverse learners are provided with consistent and rigorous behavior support, a continuum of options for the least restrictive environment, for example, inclusion, all the way to our specialized programs like an autism spectrum disorder classroom, as well as community-based instruction classroom. Service provision is key to students with disabilities' growth and achieving their optimal level. Renew hires full-time related and direct service providers. Our compliance systems also must be robust, and we must implement compliance systems from the network as well as school level to ensure our diverse learners are properly supported. I see our time is limited, so I'm just going to turn it back over to Ms. Bryant, but if anybody has any questions about intervention or our support for our diverse learners, I'm happy to answer them.
Thank you, Mary and Lisa. That concludes our presentation. Thank you so much for allowing us the opportunity to present with you today. We're thrilled about our growth and we look forward to operating additional charters in the future if so granted.
I have a question.
Thank you so much, Ms. Bryant. Ms. Eames, why don't you start us off?
Yes, since Schaumburg is in my district, I'm very proud of the progress that they're making and the leadership that they have. And that school is so exciting to go into. The kids are happy, the teachers are happy, and when you have both of those entities happy, you're doing a great job. But my question to you is, now, you're, you've got success with what you're doing, why two more? And where would they go?
Yes, so our charter network, as you can see, we have a robust network team support, and it's really robust enough for five schools, although we only have three. But we believe that support is necessary and have been taking a loss for it to make the interventions, the programming, the support that schools need work. And so, with that, we would like to add two additional schools over the next five years in order to spread the joy of our network team, as well as close any financial gaps within the charter management organization.
And do you have sites in mind for those?
We do not. Since we're a transformation organization, we rely on superintendent recommendations for school closures or school transformations in order to open any charters.
Thank you. Thank you.
Dr. Batiste?
Yes, thank you, Ms. Mary, I think, Dr. Mary, I think it was you who said that you were in charge of the systems of support that you offer to your various constituencies? I'd like to know what supports do you have or plan to have for English language learners and what success have your schools that are already in operation had with EL Special Education and Gifted Ed?
And Talented. So, I, Lisa will speak to the... So I, Lisa will speak to the English language learners, but I can definitely speak to the gifted and talented population. I am a school psychologist by trade, I always have to say that. Dr. Jordan, we are, we love our field. So we have clear and concise systems for identifying all students, and that includes students with disabilities, gifted and talented. We offer gifted services, talented in music, talented in theater, and talented in art. And for talented, we host talented evaluation session every year in each of our buildings. We make it easy for our families, and we do it on a school day, because I know some school districts know, strike against any school district, they do it on a Saturday, where parents have to bring the student. We don't make them bring the students. We do it on a school day, we let the parents know, and we set up everything so the students have the opportunity to participate. And if any child or the family lets us know that they are unable to come, we'll actually do another day for them. Gifted services, we're identifying kids all year round, there's no certain time for gifted. Did I answer your question about gifted and talented? I know Lisa had to talk about the EL.
And I have one further question. You talked about IEPs and IAPs.
Yes, sir.
What impact have the implementation of those instruments had on your identified populations?
Okay, very good question. So for students with disabilities, they require support to help them achieve their optimal level and to help them access the educational environment. So the IEPs will be our students for special education services. We follow the Child Find Law, and we identify those students with disabilities in a timely manner, evaluate them, get all of, we look at all areas of suspected disability, whether it's speech, physical therapy, whether they have issues with mobility and need adaptive physical education, or any services. The Section 504 IAP is monitored by the Office of Civil Rights, but we also do timely evaluations, and we proactively look to see if a student would benefit from services there, too. So we have quite a few systems in place.
What opportunities do your eighth-grade students have to take high school classes?
I wanted to answer part of your last question as well. We serve almost 30% of students across the network who have either IEPs or IAPs, and we've seen tremendous success at all of our schools. Those aren't students that we ever leave behind, and I think that's a really important point to note. For our English language learners, Schaumburg is an excellent example. We had a progress index of 94.1 on ELPT last year, which also has led a lot to Schaumburg's growth. We have three full-time EL teachers in the building. We also have a Director of English Language Learning who supports across all of our schools, and we offer opportunities for both push-in support and pull-out support for our ELs. For our eighth graders, we are super excited to be offering both English One and Algebra One to any eligible eighth graders across all three of our campuses.
You are doing it now.
We are currently doing it at all three sites.
And how many students are impacted by that?
There are between 18 and 24 students on each campus, so that's almost a third of the eighth-grade class on each campus.
Okay, how many classes of, at the eighth-grade level do you have?
We have three sections per school.
Three sections, okay. And just one final question, how would your new schools that you're hoping to open up for enrollment differ in terms of unique programming? Additional unique programming, or any unique programming other than what you've identified?
I like to say all the time that we are like traditional pre-K8 schools, and so all of our schools are really similar with the offerings. All of our students participate in enrichment every day. There's a robust after-school program where almost half of our students stay after school, and we added busing this year to that program, which was really exciting. But the two charters that we hope to open over the next five years, they would look very similar to our current schools with those enrichment and extracurricular activities.
Okay, I just wanted to know if there was anything differentiated, okay? Thank you.
Vice President Silvergum.
Yeah, my colleagues are extremely thorough, and running down all my questions for me, this is very efficient. But some clarification maybe to help me out, applying for two Type Ones, meaning technically a new school, and therefore maybe even Mr. Simmons or yourself could help me understand, if there was a school that was slated, let's say, to close for low performance, is that a Type One opportunity, or is this a different opportunity? Is that the kind of thing you might take on?
Yes, as a transformation organization, we look to schools that aren't successful, whether that be the superintendent's recommendation of closure, or whether that be a single-site network that just wants to join with a charter management organization. Those both would be considered transformation schools, because really it's about the support that we can offer from our network to benefit the total population of the school, students, of course, and staff members as well.
Yeah, and I very much understand what you're talking about in terms of the operational and financial planning opportunity, really, that you've got. So thank you for that clarification, I understand.
So Ms. Bryant and team, I think my colleagues have done a good job of asking great questions. A lot of them were on my list. I also am a little bit torn, because I was going to have a Renew data party at our board meeting, but you're here now, you've got board members in the audience, it's always wonderful to have board members here, thank you for coming out to support your school. That's very important, I think. Love hearing everything about gifted and talented, I think that's a real gap in our system of schools that we have. Very excited to hear, not only that you offer it, but that it's very well, that it's clearly integrated throughout your schools. Very excited to hear about the Algebra One, English One as well. I think that probably has a lot to do with some of the success that we're seeing. So let's start that data party. I was looking at scores, you know, there's a lot of dialogue in the country right now about are we back to where we were before COVID? And Renew is very much not back to where they were before COVID. Renew is miles ahead of where they were. Your school performance score, you know this, but for the public, the school performance score at Schaumburg is 26 points higher than it was prior to the COVID-19 pandemic. At Renew Laurel, it's, at Renew Laurel, it's 20 points higher, and at DTA, it's 14 points higher. So truly incredible, truly incredible growth, and I think that is, you know, all of the things that you said, the gifted education, the extensions in eighth grade for those students, the focus on your English language learners, the intentionality with your special education students, it's very clear why those numbers are what they are. And I just want to, you know, publicly thank you and everyone on your team for the work, and all the teachers in your classrooms for the work that you're doing.
Thank you.
Ms. Eames is very, very lucky to have Schaumburg in her district. I was able, I was able to join her on a visit there several months ago, and it's just, not only is it academically rigorous, but the culture in the building is incredibly strong, the students are happy to be there. And I will also, so Schaumburg is my most recent experience with Renew, but I will also say, the bands at DTA and Laurel are crushing it, and are some of the best middle school bands at the Mardi Gras parades. So I just wanted to just highlight not only the academic success, but everything that you have going on. It's really wonderful. I was very, very excited to see your data when it came out. I think the only questions that haven't been asked that were on my list were, can you talk for a moment about your teacher retention rates? Are people sticking around?
Yes, they are. We had great retention during the COVID season, and last year our retention was at 85% for teachers.
Okay. And in a transformation opportunity, typically, how has that worked with your network? Do you typically retain staff and put them through the same sort of professional development and structures that you have? Do you have a pipeline of teachers that you're developing? What does that look like?
Yes, I can go back to what it looked like in our previous transformations, and I don't think in this environment it would look much like that. So I'd rather talk about what we are currently looking, looking to do. The talent pool is very slim. Everyone's complaining about there aren't enough teachers, there aren't enough talent in the city. So we would hope that at any school that we would work with and hopefully transform, that we would be able to retain the teachers at that school and work with them. One thing that Lisa says all the time is, although 100% of our teachers are coached every week, it doesn't matter if it's a returning teacher, a new teacher, a teacher that's been teaching for 25 years, like if someone has the will, like we can make it work, and we can work with them to improve, and we've seen so much improvement over time. And so even if someone's not a teacher right now, we're excited to work with you.
Thank you. And I think the last question I have is, you know, I referenced the culture that I witnessed at Schaumburg. What, what sort of tools are you using to gauge family engagement, to hear from families? Do you use POSIP or any of these other kind of tools to get feedback from your stakeholders?
Yes, and one of the interesting things about Renew is that although we have this robust network of support, each school is very unique and does things and does things in a certain way. So each of our schools engage families in a different way, whether that be a different application. But what's required at each school is that in addition to report card conferences, that there's one event per quarter that involves families and coming out to the school to have fun and learn about what's happening on a daily basis. In addition to that, we did learn over COVID that there are different ways to engage families rather than always in person, so we still utilize the virtual platform for families, especially in the city who may live far, who may not be able to engage with us in person, that they can engage virtually as well.
All right, well, Dr. Cole Bush, Ms. Giratano, Ms. Bryant, thank you so much.
Can I just ask one thing about attendance? What's your attendance rate?
It's currently 91%, up from 84% at an all-time low two years ago. So we're really exciting and pushing that attendance initiative. Each school, again, does something a little bit different, but every school has an attendance incentive, whether it's a whole homeroom incentive, where if a homeroom spells out attendance after a certain number of days, they receive an ice cream party or a pizza party. And that's really been nice, because it encourages students to encourage each other. And so you'll see one kid walk into class like just a little bit tardy, and the whole class will erupt because they made it that day. So really, it's those types of incentives that we've really been pushing with our kids as well as parents to ensure that we can increase that rate of attendance, and the goal is 95%.
Wonderful, thank you so much to you and your team.
Thank you, thank you.
I may still celebrate you at tonight's meeting, by the way.
Ms. Eames, you will be proud to know that Schaumburg is the school that has the motto, 1% of growth every day.
Oh, thank you, of course.
And now, and now they're the highest-growing school and the highest-growing K.A. school in the state, correct? That's right.
Wow.
All right, well, Mr. Simmons, anything else you'd like to add?
Yes, President Parker, before this conclude, before we conclude the RFA public hearings, I do want to just add one clarifying point. The Type III transformation is for, to transform schools that are currently district-run, but a Type I transformation would be for a school that's not currently district-run.
That was my confusion, I thank you for helping me out with that.
No problem.
Well, I can say I worked at the Department of Education for over seven years, and I still can't remember that, so very much understood. All right, well, there are no further items on the agenda, may have a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
It's been moved by Ms. Eames, seconded by Dr. Batiste. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The time is now 4:26 PM, this hearing is adjourned.